Yes, I did just want to make a note of the donations, acceptance of donations under consent this evening. One donation that we received was from Midwest Valve, our neighbors next door to Menucha Intermediate School. They provided us with a school supply collection that they had collected, and we were so grateful to receive that call again this year and go over and pick up those supplies. And they are going, they went directly to our schools, into the hands of our kids. So, thank you to our neighbors at Midwest Valve. And then I also wanted to make a special mention for the Menucha Elementary School PTO. Through their fundraising and significant monies that they have amassed, they are able to make another donation, and they are providing this window decal at the backside of Menucha Elementary School that's adjacent to the car rider line and pickup and parking lot. So, not only does it look fantastic, it does provide some lower window coverage, which is a very nice safety element for that wide open space with the windows area, window areas there. So, this is similar to what we have on some of our windows at the junior high. So, thank you to our PTO, and of course, to all of the parents and people who have donated to all of our fundraising efforts. And Principal Roggeri is very excited, and between that and the new sign, it's gonna be shipshape over there. Yeah, we're excited.
Our PTOs really are pretty incredible with what they do. So, with that, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Cronin?
Aye.
Mrs. Vonsen?
Aye.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Conclus?
Aye. Motion carries. We have no action items tonight, so we'll move on to our discussion information items, starting with 5.01, Goal 5 update with grant updates.
Okay, Dr. Saab is gonna provide us with an annual update, as she does this time of the year, related to grant funding. So, Dr. Saab.
Thank you. I think this is the quickest we've ever gotten to these updates. So, as you can see on this report... Okay. As you can see on this report, we have received all of our grants funding. I know over the summer, when Ms. Robinson was here, she was sharing that a few of our grants had not come in just yet, but all of them came in as of last Wednesday, Thursday, was the release of the dates, or the release of the funds. You can see in Title 1, which is a focus on low-income students and at-risk students, that did increase from our last year's initial allotment. Title 2 was a slight decrease from last year's allotment. Title 2 focuses a lot on our professional development. It helps support our mentor program for our new teachers, as well as additional classes and courses, workshops for our staff throughout the year. Title 3 is for our bilingual and multilingual supports, and that was a slight decrease from last year. And then Title 4 is technology in the classroom, well-rounded education for students, and creating safe learning environments. And that was an increase from last year as well. And then IDEA and preschool funding remained the same. IDEA funding is for our special education students, and that helps us provide additional supports for students that may need additional instruction, additional supports, materials. That helps us focus more of our funding there. Those also remain the same from last year. We have usually received additional allotments after this initial allotment each year, but we are not counting on those. We're really assuming that this will be the final allotment that they provide us. So, that's just a little bit about our grant updates. Any additional questions?
Yes. So, I'm just curious, do they give you a reasoning why you get an increase, or you get a decrease, or you just...
So, grants, at the beginning of each, usually in the summer, the grant is opened up for districts to apply. And at that time, they spread the money out to all districts, and then depending on who applies and who doesn't, you may get an additional allotment if some schools don't apply for their grants. So, it just depends on how much of that money is left over in the pot after they provide those initial allotments.
Same with the decrease of more schools.
Yep. Yeah. Or there could be less funding coming from the federal government for the initial allotment as well. Yeah.
Thanks.
And some of the grants have certain criteria attached to them, so they could be based on the percentage of low-income students, for example. That's one of the criteria for determining allocation for Title 1.
So, could you talk real quick about, this is the initial allotment, is the percent increase that you see or decrease, but for the two larger percent increases, our understanding is this could be the entire grant as well, even though it's just the initial allotment? In the past, we've had additional payments.
Correct.
But that increases because this could just be the allotment?
Correct.
Because it's, for example, the first and then the IDEA, those are substantially different from in the past as far as when we get the money, but we're not assuming there's any large amounts coming after that. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. We're assuming, we're going to play it safe and assume that this is the money that we're getting from the government.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And keep in mind that these funds were already kind of committed or dispersed to states, and then there was a holdup, but now they're gonna flow through to school districts. We don't know what the year after this year will look like, or into the future. We could see some consolidation of federal funds into like one larger grant, or we could see something change in one direction or another, related to all of these different funds, which essentially get funneled to the states and then distributed to the school districts. So, it is an unknown, and will definitely be something that we watch closely as we get into, you know, looking ahead into next year's budgeting. Thank you. Okay. If there's no other questions on grants, we will move down the agenda. There's a presentation attached here for safety update. Erin's gonna pull that up for us. We're ready to go. Okay. So, first and foremost is an update on safety, which is highest priority in the school district to ensure safe environment for our students, our staff, and a larger presence with safety for our entire school community. So, we've continued the strong presence that the district has established with having a very strong school safety program, and we're continuing to push and grow and ensure that we're doing everything possible. So, in alignment with the strategic plan that is set out for us in ensuring a safe, secure learning environment, and ensuring that we're using our resources efficiently, we're providing our update this evening. I'm very excited to, you can advance it, Erin. Welcome this evening, our school safety coordinator, which was an evolution of one of our security officer allocations into this larger encompassing role to take a comprehensive view of safety throughout our school district. So, Mr. Bill Lipke, welcome. We're glad to have you. Go ahead and advance, Erin. So, I've invited Bill to join us this evening to introduce himself, so we have a face with a name. Bill comes to us with a wealth of experience and resides in our community and is very vested in our community. He's currently home-based in our schools, primarily at MIS, and then rotating into other school districts. He plays a role like our SSO, our security officers do, but he's also working side-by-side with us and our other leaders and staff throughout the district to ensure that we take an all-encompassing view on safety. So, good evening and welcome, Mr. Lipke.
Thank you, ma'am. Typically, I'm not big on microphones, ladies and gentlemen. Do I project enough that I can go ahead and get my message across?
It's being recorded.
For the recording.
For the recording.
Yeah.
Outstanding. Thank you. So, I've met all of you before. It is a pleasure to be back. I will say, since I've met, I've been getting fed with the proverbial fire hose with all of the information incoming in just the roughly three short weeks that I've been with all of you. And I have to say that the groundwork that you had laid prior to me being brought on is fantastic. The work that all of you did with creating our different programs and different planning prior to my arrival is the foundation of what we continue to double down on moving forward, and we're going to continue to push our safety protocols in the direction that we need them to go in order to make our district the safest possible for the students, the faculty, staff, and all the members of the community. So, as you saw before, a little bit about myself, United States Marine Corps, part of a counterterrorism team. I went to Chicago Police Department for 20-plus years. As the superintendent mentioned, I am vested in this community. I immediately moved out here upon retirement to give a better life to my family, and this was the place that was number one on our priority list to move to. I have twin eight-year-old girls, who while we are, you know, Shanahan, Menucha address, we are Shanahan schools unfortunately, but that's okay. Still good education, right? If you would kind of direct yourselves up to the screens, this is the security team, ladies and gentlemen. We have Officer Kendra, who is, or I'm sorry, Kedra, who is over at our junior high primarily. She spends most of her time on campus, and she will be doing a little bit of satelliteing out so that we can get our officers into all of the buildings to be familiar faces, so that if we ever have to replace her due to sickness or to training, we'll have a familiar face in that building as well. I have been spending the majority of my time over at MIS, being on campus and satelliteing out as well. And then the four faces should be familiar to the rest of you as they were brought on by all of you at one point or another. Mr. Todd, Mr. Shane, Mr. Jason, and of course, Mr. Mike. So, that is part of our safety team, and I am that kind of Overwatch assisting the superintendent with all things safety and security.
So, does Officer Me stay in uniform?
That is correct, sir. She is in uniform as a PO at that building with a squad car, and she would be our first responder on-site if something were to happen at that facility or anywhere on campus. So, moving forward with the safety plan that we have in place, ladies and gentlemen, one of the things that I did, or that we did when I first showed up, was we looked at building and facility safety and security. One of the jobs that I used to have with the military was what we referred to as red selling. We would look at facilities, and we would determine where their vulnerabilities were, and then we would make those corrections moving forward so that our vulnerabilities became our strengths. Some of those issues that we looked into were external doors. Those external doors, we are ensuring and checking on, on a regular basis throughout the day. Between the SSOs and our monitors that are in the buildings, we are doing rounds on a regular basis to ensure that those external doors are locked in place always. We are funneling all individuals through the primary doors so that we can get conversations with our secretarial staff or our front office staff to determine what their business is on premises, so that we have those checks and balances in place. We have a camera system that is operational 24/7 that is utilized by staff as well as the SSOs to pull up and be able to determine if there's anything that we need to look at more closely, whether it be behavioral issues or incidents that we have in the buildings or outside of those buildings for a physical security standpoint.
So, how often, how long do we keep the tapes? I mean, for like today, is it...
It varies, building to building, server to server, but we can have to go back, kind of like a month plus to most locations pretty easily, and then sometimes we try to record just motions, and then it needs a lot more footage, and then just stand at, at the sidewalk.
And it's much, much easier with the way that the systems are set up. We can go from point A to point B. We can enhance the footage. We can speed up the footage to be able to find what it is that we're looking for very quickly, and be able to get a bird's eye view or to zoom in very closely on whatever it is that we're looking at. We use communications at all faculty and staff will have at their disposal, as well as our SSOs, to be able to communicate throughout the buildings. And then the classroom door security, ensuring that those doors are closed when classes are in session. Additional safety measures that we have in place, the Raptor system. This is the first opportunity I've really been exposed to the Raptor system, phenomenal system, scanning the IDs, running them through a quick database to ensure that those individuals are safe enough to be in our facilities. We have the security cameras and that conversation with the secretarial staff to determine their purpose in the building, and determine whether or not it's something that can be left in the vestibule, or something that requires us to bring them further into that office area to have those conversations with the folks that they need to speak to. We are in the process of starting our drills for the season. We run a multitude of drills, whether it be fire, tornado, active threat, and we do it in an age-appropriate manner so that we're not scaring our littles, right? Because when we discuss things like run, hide, fight, that's gonna be drastically different to a five-year-old than it is to a 16-year-old, or a 15-year-old, or a 10-year-old. So, we are making sure that we're using age-appropriate terminology and age-appropriate materials to be able to get them educated on run, hide, fight. And then the reunification plan. This is primarily what I was speaking to when I said you had amazing groundwork laid in place. Some of the folks that you have out here put in a ton of time and effort to be able to build this reunification process, that if something takes place in one of our buildings, whether we have to reunite the individuals with their parents on-site, or whether we're going to reunite them off-site at an undisclosed location, it's going to allow us to be able to do that as smoothly and cleanly as possible to ensure that the right children are being picked up by the right individuals. So, that's something that we've managed to have in place now, and we're just pushing that forward and rolling it out to the staff and the administrators so that we're prepared for that. God forbid that they ever finds us. Sir.
So, what is the plan? How do you contact the parents? Is it text messaging? Is it a phone call for like the reunification?
So, there's a multitude of ways, and I'll turn that over to the superintendent to be able to speak to that a little bit better.
Yeah, we would use whatever systems that we have available to us. So, assuming that we have access to Parent Square and all that, we can direct message specific groups of parents, or send a universal message. Parents can receive that text, email notification. We also call. We can auto-call. And then, of course, we would be using social media, website, and then any other avenue that was necessary, radio broadcast, anything that was necessary, depending on the type of event that it was.
And this is, this doesn't just have to be an active threat situation. If this were to be a flood in one of the schools, or a gas leak, all of these same protocols, which is the beauty of this, these reunification procedures will work under any circumstance in order to be able to get the parents and the kids reunited. And as I had mentioned just a few moments ago, these are just some of the primary things that we're focusing our efforts on here. Securing of the entrances, the surveillance system, and the communication tools that we have out there, not just the walkies, but things like the classroom PA system, the Rival 5 system, amongst other things that we have in place for that redundancy in an emergency situation.
Just to make an extra point there, with that Rival 5 system, we have that Crisis Go app, where staff and leaders all have that app downloaded on their phone. And then, through a lot of the brilliant work of Mr. Sousa and our tech team, have a lot of kind of connectors with this process, so that if there's an alarm or alert triggered on our Crisis Go, it triggers Rival 5, which makes a direct notification to 911 for that emergency dispatch. It also notifies all of us immediately through the app. So, there's a lot of redundancies. And at the safety committee, for example, last year, the communication was brought up of what about the bus drivers? How are they aware if something's going on in a building? So, of course, Mr. Sousa figured out a way to trigger auto-notifications so that the buses automatically get a radio alert that there's a situation going on at a certain building. And that has definitely closed a gap that we had processed. And then this year, we spoke about, okay, what's our training look like for drivers, for example, or other areas? We have a strong voice at our safety committee, so it's continually evolving, even from, you know, that place where it first started.
Again, as mentioned, our standard protocols, we utilize the run, hide, fight method, which again, is age-appropriate when we discuss this. We are beginning to set up these drills at each of the schools moving forward, trying to get them done as early on in the year because you just never know. That's student-friendly training. And then the practice drills are beginning to start. I just received half a dozen notifications today, as a matter of fact, that these drills are about to be in progress as early as, I believe, next week. So, our SRPs are standard response protocols. What we have as a goal here is to use common language and to be able to bridge the gap between what we say in our buildings and what law enforcement utilizes out there on the street. And what that's trying to do is make sure that if we are in a hold-type situation, and we use the terminology of hold, as you can see, it is one of the lower levels, but we have an officer refer to it over the radio, which of course, people monitor. It's a hobby for some folks, and they use the term lockdown. That is drastically different than the situation at hand. We want to ensure that across the board, all personnel are using the same language to get the exact message across and using that plain language so it is easily understood amongst all different branches that are involved, up to and including police and fire. And we have those procedures in place for each of the things, as I had mentioned earlier, from things as simple as, you know, some type of malfunction with the building, all the way up to that active threat scenario utilizing that. Now, once you get into that lockdown stage, that is typically when that run, hide, fight protocol kicks into place, and we branch off from there with that. We already somewhat discussed the reunification method. Were there any questions pertaining to the reunification method? And I just want to be very, very clear that this is not just our school district that is involved in this. This is a collaborative effort between our district, all of the different police and fire departments that we happen to reside in. This is a very unique district. The size of it and the different agencies that we touch, it is critical for us to all be on the same page when it comes to the reunification. Depending on what school is affected, we need to ensure that all police, fire, and staff are on board using the same critical language. And then our continued commitment to safety. As I had mentioned several times over, the groundwork we had when I came in was outstanding, and we want to continue to push forward with those preventative procedures, the facility security measures that we already have in place. The student support is critical for that mental health and that well-being of the students, because as we see especially in that active threat realm, we want to make sure that the students are getting that assistance that they need for that preventative measure so we never have to deal with this. So, that's a huge part. The crisis response and recovery protocols that we have in place, and then the communication and collaboration that I've touched on a couple of times here tonight with the different agencies that are involved. Last but not least, ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for this amazing opportunity. I have spoken with several of you offline after our first introduction, and to me, this is critical. I finally get to bring the expertise and experience that I have from 30-plus years of military, law enforcement, and all of the other things, and I get to bring it home to our community and protect the ones that are the most vulnerable in this situation. So, if there are any things that, and the faculty and staff are made aware of this, if there is anything that you see or that you hear that comes up to the forefront that we can deal with moving forward, please put it on my radar so that I could bring it to the superintendent, so that we can bring it to you and be able to go ahead and make this the safest district out there for all of us involved. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Are we going to do a, any sort of, this is such a great thing to highlight, I think, to the community, all the expertise that he brings, all the pieces he's looked at, and what, you know, we're kind of moving forward. So, is there an opportunity anywhere to kind of highlight that to our community and our parents, knowing that, you know, this good work is happening for our students and staff?
Yes, absolutely. We have plans to, in our first newsletter, make a kind of formal introduction and overview, and then also build up the resources and information that's available on our website. And then we'll continue to have safety as a ongoing messaging in all of, in our district communications on a regular basis. And Mr. Jay, our community relations coordinator, has lots of great ideas too, to help us communicate. So, most definitely. It's important, I know you showcased the SSOs, our security officers that are in there. That's another unique program. There's not, there's very, very few districts, only one that I officially know of that has a program like that. And so, with the forward thinking of the board and the administration bringing that on, that is another element that it's important for parents to know, that commitment to safety with having retired officers in our district. So, that's really important. So, absolutely.
I just wanted to mention, the last slide said thank you forward, but obviously, it's a thank you to you and to your team and to all your folks that, you know, the safety and security. We live in a place where weather is a factor every day, right now, actually. So, you know, you, you send your kids to school, and you get an alert, there's a tornado four towns over. The idea, like you were just talking about, that we've, we've thought this through, we have people in place, we, when we first put these plans in place a few years ago, I'll be honest, I didn't realize we were gonna be so far ahead into where we're at right now in this short a time. And I think it's the people that are running the program. So, it's just a thank you. It's not all safety and security. It's really just being safe in general. So, thank you all for having the eyes all directions.
Thank you. And I, obviously, it goes without saying, but that is extended to many of the leaders sitting in this room, all of the leaders sitting in this room, and some who are not. They've put on a lot of effort and work in the year, in the years before we even arrived to get us to this point. Dr. Massey, Principal Monroe, and many of our other principals, and all of our school safety officers, Mr. Todd, our lead SSO, they've continued to kind of build and grow, and we're so open to new ideas and new perspectives when I arrived, and the same thing when Mr. Lipke arrived. So, it's just, it's definite, definite continual commitment that we have to demonstrate every single day with the safety of our students and our staff and our community.
I also wanted to say, I know, like, obviously, in the event that something happens is, you know, terrifying. Nobody, no parent wants to think about that, but even in the day-to-day, just our students feeling safer in the buildings, I mean, that has shown to directly lead to better outcomes for education. And so, really, thank you for all that you're doing, and to your entire team. I look forward to hearing more of what you're adding to our protocols. Appreciate it.
And just to touch on that, we, we do, I get reports from my guys on a daily basis, and we have parents out there that are rolling their windows down and just giving them a thank you. The kids, the interaction between the officers and the kids in the schools is just absolutely heartwarming. I mean, whether it's high fives, or fist bumps, or good mornings, or if we see someone that's down or having a bad day, all of these things are building these relationships that have sometimes gone to the side between law enforcement officers and children. And, you know, then you hear these stories about when they turn 16, the first time they get pulled over, there's that fear. We're trying to create that experience for these kids that they're going to carry with them their entire life, to where officers are friends, nothing to be afraid of, because we want you to run to us, not from us. So, that's a big part of what the guys at the schools are attempting to do, and create those relationships.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, moving on, we also wanted to provide an update on communications and community relations. So, just as safety is paramount to everything that we do in the district, for our children, for the adults, for the entire community and our families, communication goes hand-in-hand with that. So, not only is it critical and crisis and, like, the logistical needs for communication, but there's a larger picture with that as well. And we know our charge with strengthening family and community engagement, communication and collaboration to support student success every single day. So, with the fortunate opportunity to evolve the role of the community relations coordinator, I was able to bring on Mr. Nick Jakus to our team in the role of community relations coordinator. Erin, you can go ahead and advance. He's coming to us with a wealth of experience, creativity and energy and passion. If you have not seen social media yet, you can tell it's there, and he's just getting started. So, it's super exciting, and so I just wanted to introduce him and just give you a bird's eye view of some of our communication efforts, promo for Parent Square, and then also a few things of what's to come. So, welcome, Nick.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me here. 18 years in radio. I've pretty much done it all on that side of things. News gathering, content creation, AM side, FM side, everything but sales. I really hated sales, but everything else has been very exciting. And unlike my friend, Mr. Lipke, over here, microphones are my friend. But I certainly do. My last name is Jakus, which may not be a foreign name to you, because my wife's a kindergarten teacher here in the district up at Walnut Trails. We have two kids, Max is nine, and Macy's seven, so kind of right in that, right in that sweet spot here, too. So, actually, kind of funny, too, is one of, I put a mock press release together for my interview, and it was a press release writing about you hiring Bill. I guess the word got out a little bit about him, and I saw the importance there, too, even before he hired me, about his story being told. And that's, and that's my job, is telling the stories of what's going on in the district, whether it's staff, or students, or faculty. And in order to, in order to do that, you do have to be present. Sorry. Oh, it must not show up. There's, there's videos that are in that white...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there they go. It's, it's telling stories, and to be... She was, she was one of my reluctantly willing participants in that project.
So, so when Nick showed up, he just kind of jumped right in, and he said, hey, wanna be on film? Let's record. And they're all like staring, like, are you kidding? Like, we're a sweaty mess. We're getting our buildings ready. We're doing all this stuff, but they're troopers and jumped in.
You're gonna have to set that expectation early, as I'm coming around with cameras and microphones, so everyone better be ready.
Yeah.
And that's part of it, right? It's being out there. It's being visible. When I, when I walk into a building, I hope people are like, oh, Nick's here. That means something good is gonna happen. That means something fun. Those stories are gonna be told. Part of that, obviously, just telling the district story, but I work for the community as well. Part of it's transparency. Part of it's transparency and making sure everyone out there is aware of what's going on in here, that, you know, board wrap ups. Special important hirings, things like that. That's all part of my my job as well. Let's just get past that one.
Well, what Nick had provided there was several samples that had been posted on social media that were highlighting the beginning of the school year. That were the voices of our kindergartners reassuring mom and dad. That was chatting with our assistant director of transportation, Sloan Dempsey, who's here this evening. And recruiting drivers at National Night Out and all the fun stuff, just capturing the faces and the voices. So you can click on those little thumbnails and check it out if you're not a Facebook or Instagram or anything user. But they're they're really awesome and we've gotten a lot of really great feedback and and kind of engagement with those posts. So we've got a lot of ideas.
And I think that speaks to the the community's connection to this district already is the fact that we can put out. Me and Sloan talking about what it's like to drive a bus or just some videos of of new teachers and them telling us about them to to be as popular as they were. Means your community already cares a lot about what's going on here, which makes my job a lot easier, because I don't have to convince them to care already. They already do care. So all we got to do is tell those stories. Through the first couple of weeks, this is my first foray into education. It's it's been a whirlwind, that's for sure. So I just kind of leaned on my strengths of of content creation and said, oh, we got a first day coming up. We're doing a story about the first day of school. New teachers are here, let's have new teachers tell them about themselves. But it's going to be more focused than that going forward. A lot of work has been put in in this room to, in terms of strategic goals, portrait of a graduate, mission statement, vision. So we're going to make sure that we look at that before we do those stories going forward. I can walk into any building right now, talk to any teacher, any classroom, and there's going to be an amazing story to tell. I've already done that to to some teachers out there. But we're going to make sure that we tell the stories of collaboration and equity and innovation. We're going to make sure that a portrait of a graduate, Miles Kantorski, right here, you want to talk about being a great citizen after graduating 201. There's a story we we already told and I did a video with Miles, which will come out sometime soon. Inspire learners to be responsible, confident, successful. We have a fifth grader at MIS who chose to play the oboe, which he considers to be the hardest instrument to play, because she wants to get a scholarship into college. She's in fifth grade. You want to talk about being confident and successful? There's another story. And that was just me walking through the gym and talking to. So when we can focus and be a little bit more intentful with with what we do, we're going to mine those stories. And those connections between 201 and the community are going to be even stronger. What we've already done, and this has been a big one, is try to roll out Parent Square, which is the first year we've we've implemented that. I should say you, I have been involved in it in the past three weeks. But it is, it's a pretty amazing tool. And I know a lot of work, especially from Aaron and and admin, went into looking into a a piece of software that can communicate between school district and and parents and and between the parents and the school district as well. Through about a month or so, forty seven percent of of families have adopted and downloaded Parent Square, which from what I my understanding, Aaron, is pretty outstanding. And through the first couple of weeks, right?
Yeah, we're pretty careful of that. Nice thing is, the other fifty-three, we're still getting emails and some text messages being out, big alerts. Aaron, this is totally the dark. The app we're installing pushing there because it's easier and offers some advanced functionality later on.
Yeah.
Yeah, every note that you send out goes to Parent Square. Ideally, they have the app, but even if they don't, they still get that, they still get that email. So everyone is still reachable, even if they don't have it.
Yeah, yeah, this obviously was in response to parents' feedback in wanting to have more streamlined communication. When you have children at multiple schools and multiple levels, it's a lot to juggle, clearly. Not that this app is going to solve all the problems, but at least it makes it more organized and accessible. And so we're we're getting up and running with it, but we will continue to fully utilize this and encourage all of our parents to download.
And it's not just communication either. I think they you can even handle permission slips. So they're, you know, it's not buried in the bottom of a backpack or safety related things with with alert notifications. So we're rolling that out with banners in schools and emails and everything we can to get parents to adopt that as we go. And hopefully, that forty seven percent is going to go up and up. Moving forward, we're going to try to engage the community a little bit more with that same focus and intent that we will with some of the other stories. There'll be a cadence of regular newsletters, not just to the community, but for staff as well. We're just, we're figuring that out right now as well. Your Director of Multilingual Services and and Family Engagement, she's been working very, very hard to 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 build a a culture around the schools that don't just involve the classroom, just getting people in and having those families engaged, no matter where they stand in this community. And I've also been in contact with Aubrey Knight, who's my counterpart over at the high school. My goal along with hers is to be as collaborative as we can with with 111. So when they're doing things, we help them out. If we're doing something, they can help us out. We we have the same audience. They're in many cases, the same families in the high school and as here. So we're going to collaborate on that. Like Bill said, radio's been great for me, but my time has come with that. I'm excited to bring some of the skills that I've been able to acquire there here and help lift up the the students and staff at 201. Thanks. If there's any questions, happy to answer.
Yeah, quickly, I I like that you said you work for the community in a way, you know. With our families and our parents and our school community, there's always more to do. But we've been able to put stuff forward. I feel like there's been over time, kind of a crack with, you know, taxpayers who don't have students here or business owners who don't have students here. The community is not just the kids that go here and their their parents and families. It's there's probably thousands of folks pay taxes and want to know what's going on. And I know that's on your radar. So I I really appreciate that idea that Menica 201 is a large map. And there's many people that might want information and don't really know how to how to get it. So big job and I'm glad you're you're the one doing it.
It is, and and to your point, that's not just on our radar. That's something we're actively doing is to get families and maybe senior citizens who who have kids have have come and gone, but still live in this community, who pay just the same amount of taxes as anyone else. How can we get them not only informed but involved? I know the high school, I think Superintendent Kinder's mentioned us in some meetings, the high school invites seniors into walking their new field house or will be soon. So we're going to try to think of some ways we can we can do that here.
Yep, yep.
Yes, thank you for this. This is very exciting to me. Increased communication is something I've been like a broken record for years now. So I'm very, very excited to have you. Superintendent Kinder's done so much work since she started with us and you're already seeing the benefits of that. And I think just adding this piece in, that kindergarten video, I shared it on my personal page and my board page, it went bonkers. Like, I mean, people, my friends from all over the country were like commenting on it.
Don't don't give me too much credit because I stole the heck out of that. That was another person's idea that we kind of tweaked a little bit for our own purposes.
I loved it. It was great.
In the, I mean, yeah, it is, it's cute, right? But it's it's that connection building. It makes people who maybe aren't kindergarten families care, right? And when they care, they're more invested and and it builds trust.
Or the student that dressed like Mr. Seaton on the, was that the first or second day? That one went crazy too.
I've recorded a video with them already that'll be coming out soon.
This is the kind of stuff I think really brings that connection and with the community, like Adam was saying, larger community and that spreads. And it can only do positive things.
Yeah, the best stories we have to tell, it's the faces and voices and stories of our people. So our kids, all the adults who are working every single day to support our kids, our families, our business partners, community partners. And so we have so many good things going on. We've got a, we've got a lot to elevate.
She's had to pull the reins on me a little bit to try to slow me down sometimes. Maybe we just need to wait a little bit.
No, we're we're both going to be, you know, full speed running in in partnership with all of our building leaders and department leaders. There's, there's a lot of good there. So we're getting some kind of organization to all of our creative energies and we're going to be ready to charge forward.
I have the funnest job in the district and I don't think there's any doubt about it. Thanks for letting me do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick.
Now, a little less fun topic.
And finally, just as fun, an assessment update with Mrs. McCarrow.
No offense.
I'm excited about it. I don't know about you.
Well, you know, there is, there is a way, there's many ways to measure success, right? And through the the voices of our people, but also to the impact and the outcomes that we have for their learning. So Mrs. McCarrow has a brief, brief update with the kind of what's been going on at the state level related to proficiency levels. So Mrs. McCarrow.
Thank you. Yeah, super brief. I will touch more on this when my, like, when the the reports come out with the data and we're we're talking about looking at our actual data. So it makes a little more sense. But just so you guys are aware, and then I'm going to work with Ms. Martinez and Mr. Jakus to work on some communication with the families. So they are aware of some of the the impending changes here and the impact that they have. So if you remember last year, we started talking about Vision 2030. You guys had approved to to kind of support that as a plethora of public schools did. There was kind of three umbrellas of that, Vision 2030, and it was future focused learning, shared accountability and predictable funding. So this update that the state has kind of falls in in that number two area of shared accountability. And it's working at making some better alignments with our testing data in in terms of our students and their proficiency levels and across the state, just kind of cleaning some things up. So this has been an eighteen month process that the state has gone under. And for your viewing, we put this right, sizing Illinois benchmarks for proficiency. It's a top line message and talking points. I'm just going to highlight a couple of the things. You guys can read the document, so I won't go over it in its entirety. But basically, in the document, what you'll read is that this was an eighteen month process. It started in March of 2024. Board moved on it August thirteenth of 2025, so it's very recent. But it was a long process to get here. What had happened is that we noticed that our proficiency benchmarks were misaligned with other national and state indicators. You guys probably saw it, I think I even mentioned it. So if you look at our the NAEP scores in terms of Illinois, how it does on the NAEP scores compared to other states. In just about every subject, we're one of the top four, top four states for that. But if you look at our IR scores or our state scores, we're often kind of in the middle. So we were seeing some discrepancies there and the state was seeing some discrepancies. So we started looking at the data and then the fourth grade was a big piece of data. They looked at the last round of NAEP. And by the way, we always randomly get selected for NAEP about every two years. So I can actually say our data is a piece of that because we usually have at least two schools that end up taking that NAEP assessment. But that data was indicating that, hey, Illinois scores are really high. But when you looked at us compared from other states with our performance levels that we had, state to state, we're one of the lowest in in the nation. So we were seeing discrepancies, the state was seeing discrepancies. I know Superintendent Kinder spoke about this a little bit last year too. So all of this stuff is kind of coming to fruition. And then we see that kids are graduating high school and attending two or four year colleges at a higher rate than what our performance indicators are saying they are ready for. So we've got all of these data pieces telling us something's off a little bit. So we started looking into it. And then on this document too, later on, they actually go through of actual examples of kids that have been negatively impacted by these performance benchmarks. And I can speak from being at the junior high forever. We've we've had them and seen them too. I think several years ago, the valedictorian got a level three in on the math score. Like, was the top of the class in the geo class, but was was getting a level three on the IR score. So we had seen that firsthand within our buildings that that there was some negative impacts here. So this document kind of speaks about that. So because of that, the state talked about reforming the Illinois assessment system so we can have some results timely. And it's a good measure of student proficiency and growth over time. So what the other document that I had linked in is kind of the the big ta-da. And this is something the state kind of came out with. If you want to go to the other document, please, thank you. But what they did in this eighteen month kind of dissection of the assessment and the pieces is they said, okay, we are going to make some standard cut scores here. Instead of having three for this test and five for this test and a pass or not pass, we're going to, we're going to streamline everything and make the kind of have that common language going on. So they, what they've done here is they have four performance levels, below proficient, approaching proficient and above proficient. And they have that for IR math, IR ELA, they have it for the ISA, the science assessment and the ACT, which has kind of been this, the the state approved assessment. So those scores will be the, those performance benchmarks will be applicable for all of those reports. So as a parent going through systems, you should, after some time, have some familiarity with those proficiency, proficiency benchmarks, sorry. All right, so this is the big data piece that this is, that the state has come up with about like what families need to know and working with Ms. Martinez and Mr. Jakus about how we can appropriately communicate these changes with the school report card that will be coming out at the end of October. That will be the last year that that report card looks the way it does. That's another component of this is the state is looking to revamp that as well. So we will be working on some communication to send out that way when, you know, the IR test scores go out to students. Parents have a better understanding of what the cut scores mean, what the benchmarks are, and a little bit of the why Illinois kind of went down this road to to update their levels.
So I'm just confused. So this, this here is for the state of Illinois. It's not, is there a national?
There is not. Well, I, I mean, there are national tests, NAEP would be one of those that kind of take data and look at nationwide assessments and that. But yet, this is, every state kind of designs their own like benchmarks and proficiencies. And this is now what Illinois is moving to.
So and that's a stupid question, but why isn't there a national?
Because not every state has the same state level assessment system. So they use the NAEP, that national assessment, as this anchor for every state to create their system. And what Illinois basically said is like, we want the levels that we have established to be more in alignment with that national, those national benchmarks. So, yeah. So it is, it is attempting to get on the same page nationally, but Illinois has no control over what assessments other states give. We can look at ACT, for example, at the high school level, but every state has different rules about, does everyone have to take it? Only the kids going to college, et cetera, et cetera. So this does help us have a picture on a national level, just like with MAP, which is an assessment we use internally. But it has national norms, so we can have that that comparison point as well.
I was just reading an article about the PSAT, because now it's switched to ACT. But they use that nationally for like, you know, national merit, right? And the cutoff rate, it got really quiet. The cutoff rate in Illinois is so much higher than other states because kids just outperform so much higher. So like in some states, you had to have like this, the score they make it is like, say, a two oh six. And in Illinois, it's like a two eighteen to even make the cut of the top ten percent.
Yeah, so that's a perfect example. So the college board says, here's the benchmark. If you hit this, like, you're at the level. And Illinois's benchmark was set here. So we would have, you know, kids in Illinois who would hit the college board benchmark, but not the Illinois benchmark. And then kind of have this implication perhaps on their college entry or something else. So it it didn't necessarily, it didn't benefit anybody and it was sending a lot of wrong messages. So they're attempting, instead of just ignoring this issue, to finally just say, hey, we've known this for years and years, let's do something about it. So it's going to be a big transition, but hopefully present more of an accurate picture of how well we're preparing children on that levels of college and career readiness from the earliest grades all the way up to the time they're going on to high school.
Any other questions? Like I said, more to come when our assessment data comes in. And we'll talk about, you know, the differences or something we see because of the new benchmarks and and cut scores. That'll be kind of going live at the end of October. So November, I'll look to bring to you kind of an assessment update. And we'll be able to speak about these a little bit more as it pertains to our data.
So I'm, I just fast forward a little bit. I'm reading the last kind of paragraph. So for parents to kind of assess the progress would be based on the actual score perhaps? Or like from year to year, since it'll be obviously a different proficiency or system, cut level. So the score itself, the test and the scoring won't change. So you you'll have the opportunity to see the student's score, where they're at and where they're at now.
Yes, and you'll, they actually have the data. So when you get your kid's report, you can look back to previous years. And they have their new cut score. So you could see, oh, maybe my kid was a level three two years ago, but this was the score. So I know that would equate to proficient now or whatever the case would be.
You mentioned that the, everything was getting streamlined. So is the cut score the same for every subject area?
The the proficient score for it is, it's similar, yes. Yeah. Any other questions?
I love how excited you get about Dad.
I'm sorry, I do.
It's great. No, it's great. Can't you just feel the passion?
I love it. I love it. I love it.
All right, thanks, guys.
Uh, do we have any board updates tonight? Okay, administrative reports.
Okay, any administrative reports to make note of? Dr. Staub, did you have any?
Yeah, I just have a couple of points. They won't take long. I know the storm's coming. I just wanted to point out, each summer, we have been partnering with Morris Hospital to complete sports physical clinics. And last year, we set a record, and we set another one again this summer by completing one hundred and sixteen physicals this past summer. We're expecting Morris Hospital then is gracious and donates the money back to our our sports programs and our athletic programs. So there we're expecting them to donate twenty-three hundred dollars back to us again this year. So that's pretty exciting, yeah. And then if you have not seen already, on ParentSquare, just a few hours ago, Ms. Martinez sent out a reminder about our first VPAC meeting of the year. And that one is scheduled for September fourth at 5:00 PM here at the Primary Center. It's one of my favorite meetings or I, there's a lot of really great events in the evenings at our schools, but it's one of my favorites because we highlight all of our students that have graduated from the multilingual program. And it's a great night of of just celebrations with the families. So it's a great time to see families and and their little ones. So we invite everyone from the community to come to the Primary Center and enjoy that with us. Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, Mr. Souza? Did you have anything for us this evening?
So it came out of equipment today. The the go over. Equipment, you had some major problems. I want to kind of give a quick shout out to Matt Shackley and the rest of the technology team. Luckily, months ago, we did like a disaster recovery drill, similar to how schools do like a fire drill, but this is more like an IT disaster drill. So we built like a spare router firewall, and we had it all kind of set up. And like, what would happen if this box were to die? And like, well, today, that happened. And so we were able to, after we cleaned stuff up and everything, got the water stopped and maintenance got the leak stopped and everything, to put that in. So we were able to get the intermediate school back online after, you know, after kind of diagnosing what was good, what was bad. Otherwise, had we not, we'd still be possibly there just trying to get the school back online and learning continuing. So I just want to kind of give a shout out to them. One of the things were preparation helped out a lot, but they actually, they really kind of took it home and kind of scored touchdown just building, getting the building online and back online. With that, just generally, the school, I I think we did a pretty good job this year. We had a lot of last-minute delays on equipment coming in, whatever. But we seemed to kind of pull together and get school ready to rock and roll for the first day of school. So pretty happy about that. And with that, I guess I'll take any further questions.
Okay, real quick, in the ParentSquare app, under the links section, will you please add a link to Power School?
Yeah, okay. We'll get that going. Okay.
I'm going to give another plug for ParentSquare because I don't have it as a teacher this year, and I miss it desperately. It was so nice to be able to send out. And I know for people like my husband, I'll throw him under the bus down here. It's okay. He doesn't like all the emails, so to have like one home base to go to and be able to scroll through and see what's come during the day is awesome. So highly recommend parents get in that app and utilize all those features.
Yeah, it gives a, we haven't really had a chance yet since it's been trying to like, hey, download the app, get get created. But it gives actually, it shifts the power over to parents. So you can actually say, you know what, I don't want all the emails. I just want you to go, everything go into the app. So then your inbox doesn't keep getting that crushed on with all the different emails. There's a lot of power and flexibility given to the parents now that we're starting to kind of roll and get everyone going. And we're just kind of hitting the tip of the iceberg. There's a lot of advanced functionality, you know, like certainly some of the links that we could add in. But eventually, some forums and parent-to-parent conferences, yada, yada. So we're we're pretty excited so far at the beginning. There's a lot of like a concerted effort to get the staff kind of trained who hadn't used it last year. So that went pretty well. And I think that we're just kind of going up and up in usage. And hopefully, hopefully, you're back from parents liking it. I have, I've heard some through the grape lines that they like it, so.
It's very simple feature, but I like that I'm able to put a like or a heart so the teacher knows that I've gotten the message. I know you mentioned like not getting so many notifications. I still am getting a notification per child. I thought they were going to be per building, like when the buses were late.
Well, yeah, so when when a bus rolls late, I mean, we're specifically going, give it to parents now because you don't want that at 6:00 PM that your bus is twenty minutes late. So what we're trying to do is like when bus thirty-eight's late at the junior high intermediate, boom, goes out, you know, and it's all like templatized. So it's like, Adam's bus thirty-eight's going to be twenty minutes late today. Boom, boom, boom. And then or but if you have a kid at a junior high in Walnut and thirty-eight's late at the junior high, it's likely going to be late at Walnut Trails. So then you might get, we're trying to then get on top of that, like, hmm, is this bus going to be on time or not at Walnut Trails? And I know, like, we talked to transportation about trying to decipher the time warp that is between the junior high runs and the Walnut Trails because or any of the K4s just because sometimes a route is very late at the junior high or leaving the junior high or whatever, but then not actually very late when it gets to the K4 just because it has a shorter run by luck or it ends right next to the building. So there's a lot of complexities there. I'm sure others can speak more to it than me. But we're trying to kind of like get it out fast, but there's probably some tweaking we could do. Or perhaps it's on like the parent side. We just haven't really gotten to it.
I think it was just a general one on the first day. Everybody's buses are fifteen to twenty minutes late. But I thought I would get one for Walnut and one for MIS.
Uh, the first, yeah, I mean, that was, the first day was the first day. And I I think truthfully, we probably were just kind of over-communicating that just, you know, because it was kind of like new, you know, when we practice, it's like, okay, well, it's like I I sent like a Dr. Staub's kid like fifteen, fake, your bus is late on August third, training seminars, just to kind of go through the motions. But now when you're starting counting real buses, real routes, and it's five, six, seven routes on the first day just because it's the first day, it we, you know, probably over pushed.
I certainly think you should over-communicate rather than under-communicate whenever we're talking kids on buses in particular. I was just wondering if if in general, throughout the school year.
I mean, we definitely are sending it like per student. Now, if you've got two kids at junior high, you're probably going to get two. We'd have to look into if we can get that smarter or not because we're trying to go as fast as possible. Give me all the kids in thirty-one junior high, boom, go. And that's like the concept of getting the communications out fast. So then it doesn't like, ah, it's too many clicks. We didn't get to it, sorry. So that's.
And that's something we can learn and look into. I know Power School will do it. So it's probably something ParentSquare can, we just got to look into.
Yeah, I'd have to drill into, if I've got two kids getting the same message, can I pare it down to one? But it's like the emergency message, not like a general post. So it's a, it's a kind of threading a needle on that where it's get it out fast but not duplicate, but.
Like the instant feature, that that override?
Yeah, it's the instant one because it's, you know, we can't wait on the digest on that because bus thirty-eight is late. But yeah, I'd have to chew on if we can do that or not with, if you have two kids on the same bus or same school kind of a thing.
So I think that one of the slides said there was forty-seven or fifty percent participation or signing up.
App downloads, essentially, yes.
App downloads, so is that, is that of the students or how are we counting?
Parents, like of the of the parental population.
So, okay.
Of the like five thousand unique parent accounts we have.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Whatever that number is, because, you know.
So that's a lot. That's good. I think as word of mouth, as you use it, you're going to tell your neighbor you should be using this.
Uh, another school district I talked to has had ParentSquare for three years, and they're at like fifty-nine percent. So we've already like closing the gap on them on just like the app download thing. But we'll have to look. There's always tweaks to be made, for sure. Yeah, I mean, the first day was a little.
A great viral video on that might.
Yes.
See the trick.
Here we go.
Any other questions, comments for tech? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other administrative updates? Okay, I did want to make a special mention and introduction. We have Menucha Transportation Assistant Director Sloan Dempsey in the audience tonight to put a face with the name. Welcome, Sloan. Sloan is a superhero. She she came to us just just recently, just this past spring, and has been very short learning curve, bringing her many, many years of experience all the way from driver to bus sales to everything in between. And she's a phenom, and she's working with our office team at the Menucha Transportation Office, mechanics, drivers, and aides with some big adjustments with. We have gone through the past year with bringing our services together for one organization for Menucha Transportation. So Sloan has jumped right in, and she's helping lead the charge and getting all the bumps worked out from the beginning of the year. So we thank everybody for their patience, and of course, to all of our drivers, aides, mechanics, office staff. Thank you. We appreciate you. And I think all things considered, we're off to a very good start, even though we are still going to continue the push for recruiting drivers and aides. And we definitely need to kind of increase that to make sure that we're completely operational with a bit of a buffer. So welcome, Sloan. We're so glad you're here. And then finally, just I want to extend that appreciation to all of our leaders, staff, support staff, students, and families. We are up and running. We had a very successful start with our three days last week and today, Monday. There's definitely been some changes with tweaks to scheduling, with teaming and block scheduling at the junior high, to changes in elementary scheduling, and of course, snack and some other adjustments and changes. And we just truly appreciate our staff and our parents being willing to kind of work through any of the tweaks or changes that we've adapted to. And it was just so wonderful to see all of the efforts of the team come together in welcoming our kiddos back last Wednesday. And prior to that, our staff on on Monday, and of course, our new teachers the week prior. So we are off to a really great start, and we want to keep that momentum going. And there's definitely lots of great things to come this year. So thank you to everyone for your efforts and partnership, and we are looking forward to continuing the charge into the upcoming year.
We have no need for executive session, correct? All right, if there are no other questions or concerns, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay. And motion carries, we're adjourned.